Hello everyone. Welcome to today's livestream. I will check if it is streaming perfectly. On the different platform, I have everything fired up. Nothing exciting and different for today. Um, I was testing for MetaHumans in 5.7 and it was crashing my system. Yep, nothing, nothing new. Let me see if it's streaming just fine on. Yep, uh, it seems fine, it's streaming. And. And Twitch always is not able to load the player but it is going fine with the spams as well. Cake, I don't know if it is. It is because cake is not working properly. Maybe it's because of the data. Uh, maybe I need to try a different restream with, I tried different methods but it don't work. Hello Asher, how are you? For a long time no see. How are things? I will post and we will do our feedback session tomorrow. So yeah, I will post the. Work in progress. Okay, uh, yeah, so this is. Looking nice, so let me show. So this is what we did yesterday. I'm already having, you know. Nice feeling about it. I like it. It's blending more uniquely. And we can do, you know, scattering. Maybe we can try the PCG again. The PCG curve we can make and then we can add it there. Um, show like this. Terrain and everything, the bridge will be longer, so it will not be issue. So rather than who doing it this way, let's try doing it with the PCG way because with the PCG we can scatter things on top of it also. And also we can, um, you know, add the. Mesh, spline mesh. The only thing was that this was this, uh, like in here, right? The stretching a scale, we can polish it. We have made this stone wall. Okay, so we can make a. Path mesh. So let's get into it. Content browser is already there. So here I can show you, I was trying to test out. MetaHumans here. I tried to create, I turned on MetaHuman, then I said okay. I will create a corrector. This is it. Oh, when I double click it, it is crashing basically. So do we have any? MetaHuman manager. Use MetaHuman manager to verify the package management, upload and distributor and done more. That is fine, but. All right, let's see if we have anything because I was just whenever double clicking it. It's crashing basically. So with crash, I'm not gonna reopen it. Let's see. Because there is a hyperskin also in here because I wanted to test this, uh. Act and, uh, you know, with the camera you can do the animations of the facial animation and the video also. Wanted to test that out. Because I wanted to make a short movie or sort, uh, with the things. There yeah, and it crashed, see? Hmm, yeah, so that's what is happening basically. I'm not gonna reopen it. I'm just showing you that I'm having this problem. So no worries, it can go. Now on the procedural, uh, in, uh. And we can create, uh. Path. Or we have, already have, in the landscape, we already have path. If I show you landscape, we have path here, we can create new PCG. Craft. And. We could try. With the spline with the, we have template with a bunch of stuff. I don't know. We can save our own template also which will be easy. And also I remember there was a tool we had at, uh. Was enough for which projects the mesh on top of the terrain also. So. So we create the curve, just keep it above the terrain and it wherever it goes is just projected. On the floor. So you don't have to exactly match like we have in our landscape one also. We'd have to exactly match the thing when it will automatically project the whole mesh basically. Uh, path. Let me search forest path. I'll just make it. Not one A. Uh, we have here, you just need, uh, like if I show you my other ones, we have made. So we know what we have did. So we get spline data and with the tag with the stone wall, okay? We get and, uh. We do spline sampler. I think it's add. The points on there and then we recreate and then spline mesh basically. We add in there. Yes, that's it. So this is, this is it. For now. So we can do the same thing. Get spline, we can say all vector. By tag and we can say, okay, forest path and we can copy this. And like before. We can manually create the spline which we have. In the modeling tool, we can go. But I still want to know how we can add. A spline parameter underneath it, uh, itself. If I bring in. Bring in the paths, um, PCG. Here. It's basically have a bound basically, like we could that have a bound. I want it to be boundless so we can maybe, maybe we'll have something that it is. Not bounded by bounds. Nice, nice. So we'll see. Because that is really. Shape is there, I don't want to open anything. So I can, you know. There should be something. Look what the bounds, so this is the bounds basically. We can increase, decrease this. How big this will be, less. For now. For the timing. Okay, this is what we have. We can go to modeling tool and we can create the spline. And also we can move. Move to procedurals, okay? And we can also make it current folder. So whatever we create will be in here. We already have a spline actor which we can, uh, rename. Uh, space line. Um, sure, stone wall, you can say. Don't. More. One. Yeah, so this is the spline. So here we can mesh spline or draw spline, I believe. And everything is. Fine, so we can. When it create. Create. Why it's not creating now? Do we have already? Nope. So we can simply. Here the spline basically wherever it is. And beyond. I don't think I'm gonna create beyond this box, but. It's okay. So it created a splines. So we have a spline actor now here. Okay, so which is this. We can have such tag. And there are tags and we can just. Say it's a forest path. So now the PCG will know. So SP. Uh, forest. Path. One A. Now let's. Yeah, so see, this is awfully perfect. That's good. PCG. And I think the. Spline mesh. Spline to mesh, I believe, like what we use. Mesh spline, okay. Actually, maybe this one will be awesome too. So this is like the creating points basically. Uh, so if we, uh, we can press D to debug it. Uh. If it show up in there. Did we get spline data all with forest path? Yep, and there is like children and other things as well which I wish I could see. Spot tag. And. Save them. Should show some tiny cubes at least on there. At least showing up like this is fine. Okay, no worries. So we can. Uh, simply I can copy these. Come here. Paste them here. So we connect and for the spline, you see? The wall came in because, uh, in here we have to change the mesh. The mesh we already have. This, uh, path one C. We can use. And here it's coming. Hmm, so now we have a mesh and how it is placing it is a question. Let me move it away. Okay, you see? We are meshed but it is stressed and we, the tutorial we were following has shown it really well also. How to, you know, do it, but let's try re-sampling it, uh. Uh, with 400, right? So we know how much the size is. You see, re-sample is like at each point how much we want to put it. Now we, hmm. We can roughly know it from if you hover over it. It is, uh, dimension is like 323. 245, 25, it's like weird size. So at least I think we can say 300 is. Will be best for it without stretching toward any side, but this seems okay at 600 also. Right? So. If it's one C or any other. Yeah, so this is, uh, one B. Okay, so I'll, I'll assign this one to. Our. Mesh. Does it work? Yeah. You see this, uh, as the mesh is there. Okay, so it's perfect. Now let's see what all things we can do. Should not need, but all the other settings we have. Spline sampler we will see later on, but what we want to first I want to see is the scale. The mesh is there and do we have any? Scale. Up direction is there, offset is there. Forward direction is there. Scale mesh to bounds, just disappear it. Scale mesh to the full width, uh, let's keep going including. Uh, can we add? Hmm, that would be nice. Like if we can, I think we can select the spline in the landscape also and tag it maybe. That will be crazy also. But I don't see. I don't see any. Sample line up direction is a point two. I don't see any scale. Let's see if we have scale. Nope, we have scale. So maybe we transform the points. Should I try, uh, in here? This sample we can, bonding shape is not. Let's see. Pass. Transform. This, is there anything? Transfer point is there. So we take the point. Pluck it back and we'll see how we scale. Overall, where is the overall scale? No? Yep, so see this is working. So I'll set two. Right this, um, three. Three. So it's, we are making it larger at least. The stretching we can fix, uh, no issue. So once we have it as per the width in there. So I believe I will make it. Four and four, which is almost the size of the other thing. So first what we can do. Hide the landscape curve first. So go on landscape. Super slow, manage. Spline. I don't want to do that. This is why I want to, you know, have it in PCG because I don't want to do it every time. Again and again. All that. Okay, we have to check it. Select and I will remove the mesh. Yeah, so it's clean. So we'll check how to sort this out. It's currently we scaled it as wishing. Now. Okay, so maybe it's the banking issue, uh, the banking in the spline. But overall you see we have a pretty large spline. We can make it little bit smaller. Let me bring up. The editor again. Okay, so this is basically. Three and three, um. And also like because it's too much, we can re-sample, in the re-sampler we can increase the distance. Let's try. Right, so. So we have less of these basically. And we have already have shader and in the spline can we. And let's see if it is making, it's making it till here where the boxes. See, that's the, basically the issue with this. We have to create the box. Which it don't create outside of this. So I know we have a spline, forest path spline here. And we have settings in here. To. Bank basically. There's a scale in here also. Maybe that could help. Let me see. Let me, if I scale our individual point. This one. Don't do anything. Yeah, it did. Oh, look at that. Again, basically. So when you scale the points. It give us basically. Thing. And my own. Set again. This is, okay, this is interpolation type. This is curve. Constant. Time, what did it do? Curve. So curve is good, but what I want is. The tangent. Close loop it is not. Adjust tangent. Because I can. Rotate it. Basically. But what if I don't want in rotation? Let me see if, uh, in the transform I want to see what it is. Rotation. So I make zero zero on the both end. So I will select all and I do zero. Zero. Does it make it flat? Almost, yes. Okay, so we have a path basically. No. This is like terrain is not good, so we will not. And we only rotated in Z. I say zero zero on both of. There is tangent also, hmm. But what I want is mainly to, to path to remain flat basically. And I believe like if we increase the scale of this bound, it will create on the other area as well. So yeah, so now we have a path outside. And what if we take the forest path? Okay, and I duplicate it on the other end. As well, so like, for example, this is, uh, let's skip spot, no? So just give me, let me remove this. Again, spline, select all. Where is the spline? Segment, all the segments. Spline mesh is deleted. Nice. So now we have. So we don't have anything. I don't know how much we can. Uh, manipulate the landscape layers because landscape, if you want to deform it, I don't know if it will work. So I'll take the forest path. And I'll duplicate this one. Here. Move it up and press and, and is not working here. So that was another issue like and, and they just dropped the thing on the floor. We have almost equal spline. What I can do. Not, uh, delete. And the end is working here definitely. See? It drops to the ground perfectly. Move it here and I say press end key and it drops. Which is not happening, I think after this, some reason. See, it's not working here. I don't know why. So it's. It's a really weird. Kind of issue. We'll see if it is because of something. Yeah, this one is working and then this is not working. Why? What did it snap to? Now it's working, nice. As you can see, we have made the terrain go a little bit up because of the landscapes plane only. I think we, I don't know if we can sample it. If we could, that would be great because we can. Sample the terrain and then with PCG we can scatter things on top. We can test that out. Before now we have made it, so we will just go with it for now. And now we have this path also and as our bound is not inside there. So I'll take this one. Maybe I'll make it. What is this? Yes, so let me increase. Make it bigger than ever. I want to see if it works on multiple splines. They're definitely working here and not on this plan. And because we duplicated it from. The same and the path should continue also now. See, it's continuing really well. And but this one do not have mesh and I don't want to create another PCG, but if this would have been really great if we could. Maybe in the Z direction. Forest path second. And, uh, do we have tags still? First part tag is there. Yep, because it's been duplicated, it should be supposed to be there. And. And here. And it should. Uh, do we have? This one still work, but not this one. Can't, uh, so does it not support multiple ones? That's. Question. Okay, so we'll figure that out. That's okay. But we have a spline. And yeah, which is creating. A really nice blend and the scale is there because there is no material change, so it will look odd a bit. And this one is. Where is it? Just say, oh, this swapped, uh. I'm just thinking like it's, if it is. I'm just thinking like it's if it is. Also it blind basically. Well. Nice terrain also so we don't. And now there is a. Like if if we do like this and press end. It is placing it on there. And you see it is going in and but you remember we have transform points node already. Which can help us bring them up a bit because it's right now taking it in the center of. Center of the geometry which is should nor we want to place it by origin and let's see if we have something like that. This uh stone wall we don't need anymore. That's fine and uh. I do remember there was access but. There was not. Collision we don't need definitely. Hmm our shadow is totally fine. That's a lot of lot of settings. Use an occluder I think it's the when you don't want something. Spline mesh parameter forward scale bound we don't have. Line up spline up direction is okay to. Cluster bound scale. There is offset but I think the start and end of it the of the spline. Post process spline measure right I think there there are some parameters and the stuff which we can think about it. But overall we have wait. Why we have two of these? Yeah so because we have this transform points we can easily offset. Okay. See. So we can shift it up. Overall basically. Until it matches so I think ten. Nice. Perfect. Okay let's look at the chat Milan is here. Wait uh Cameron chat uh uh sure yeah um doing well. Yeah I'm also doing well uh trying to be more regular as I promised so this week is good like at least the fourth day regular stream so. Yeah so it's going good. Have you checked that's two for polygonic uh no like I I remember long time back I downloaded when they were giving it for free to try it out. But I never uh. Can repeat uh what they're trying to solve segment only as well. Uh it is something basically. We solved already in yesterday so you see it's more blended now because we use RVT. Uh in the yesterday's stream we implemented uh real-time virtual texture where it is blending more. And the second is this terrain is not neon terrain if I show you that is still a problem uh it's not uh. Say if I neonite visualization triangles uh you see terrain uh landscape is still not neonite. Two hours I turned it on but it do not work in our uh neonite. And I was having problem where I was uh you know placing the curve. It was a landscape so we have to go to landscape and change the curve and stuff I don't want to do that so I was making this curve. Uh path curves and even this stone wall we have made using PCG basically. So that's what I am currently doing so I made this path. So now I had uh something I was trying to solve basically this paths are separate but I wanted them to come with the PCG tool itself. Uh and something I found like I have two curves but this forest uh PCG is not picking it up maybe PCG cannot pick multiple. But should I think it can pick multiple uh because when people make path and every roads and everything. So I think it can pick me I I don't know right now how to so that's one thing I'm I will fix. But the blending and everything we have fixed already so that is sorted on our side. But what I want to sort now is uh how to get the landscape night and five point seven is. Hmm I I I can try convert the project into five point seven and see if that works. But for now. We have this line also and we have spline mesh also with the PCG now I will just add debris. And this this rocks and everything I'm placing I will try to place it inside the. Am I sharing? No sorry my mistake sorry 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 so the issue is uh I will repeat quickly uh if I go to night. See so the landscape is not neonite right now so that's one issue uh when we turn everything on it just vanish. Yeah in yesterday's stream you can also see and the second thing is the same this landscape splines we have it. Already we placed it using landscape spline but now it is like we have to go every time inside the landscape and then change the spline which I don't want to. Uh didn't want to do so I created this plans. Right it definitely cannot uh bend the landscape but I believe uh. If we even can use the splines with PCG to do we saw in this they didn't find the tag. And how it works but overall I believe uh. This one is the more freedom like I can change just this. And also this line we have to create separately. But I believe we can you know use a child node you can add a spline in there easily right uh. Um wait okay so it's spline and you can add a spline. Okay spline mesh or spline utility and I don't know how to get it inside. PCG yet but yeah we will figure it out that is easy peasy thing not issue. So now uh let's move on with this and add another thing. Is the points on top of our. Our mesh okay. I believe we can spawn points on mesh or spline also we both are things we can do like if we want to put instance grass on top of it or these stones we have. So what I'm gonna do I will. Uh maybe sample points. Points. Um hmm I remember there was something this not this it's not distributed points it's a sample. Hmm a point distribute I don't know I remember I remember something it was like that sample let's see sample. Sample points maybe. Copy point sample texture. Hmm sample texture mass sampler let's try but it's not. It's using the mesh basically it's not the one. Uh points. Let's see if we find copy create points. And like if you don't we just find a simple tutorial. Uh we are Milan says like so you are on five point five right now uh they add. Version numbers somewhere but they were blend. They. They should add version number somewhere that some way blender does have you checked what they're coming for blend of five? Uh yes I'm checking both of them like there is like a lot of videos I've watched where they said like I. Honestly I was not even able to turn on the the fast viewport thingy. Uh we saw it and I have I'm using five only let's see it is open it's like five. Alpha is like just I installed like yesterday this one and in the preferences uh. I think somewhere. You have. Is it a rendering wait wait. V port is not lighting system so it's like Vulcan okay so I turn on Vulcan. Right and it's did not see the speed. Okay. And yeah that's. Yeah that's the. So yeah this is basically. I installed yesterday. And this is good this is good I I like it uh how they are but I think it's it's based on how they develop things. They. It's it's not um in our hand so that I think blender and unreal and epic have different type of development cycle. So maybe they are happy with five point days I like it's it's moving fast. And half of the things are not working so I think like moving fast is fine. Uh and where is meta human I just did meta human. Showed her a created in five point seven when I tried to open it it just crashed basically. So maybe I'm doing something wrong but it is how it is so I don't like it so let's look at our. Some videos. Okay hmm PCG scatter.
Hi.
Uh turn on the desktop right so. And this is actually also the. The very first. Video. Is surface sampler which is I think take the landscape. But what note that is. Yeah so this is. Okay let's see if we can get it otherwise we'll just move on to the other tutorial. Sampler. Surface sampler is there and. The surface. Can it be this is cannot be because it's green. Mesh to. Surface. Let's uh ask right questions. This is a good video. Scatter on mesh. Because he uh can. Land keep get landscape data is not there. Which node they are using. Come on too fast. Ah okay. It's inside this. Import what there is nothing. What? What is this? There is nothing input what are you talking about? That's weird see. Come on. How can they change it? Okay no worries let's uh on a mesh. Mesh sampler is. But I want to self. And there is get actor data is. But do we have to work with that like a green tag every time? We have mesh sampler but how can I do it on self? Come on. Um I know there is. Let's see mesh sampler. In is here. Can we add now? Yes. We can edit. Input source is there and now. Do we have points? Hmm what do I do? My sampler bounds modify why did I add but I don't know. Come on stop. But this is itself and. Let's try. I don't know what bounds modifier does maybe it create the bound for it. And uh. Copy points. Itself only. And then we press D. Uh it's. Density filter. And noise filter is there. But how can we see it? Do you see any point I don't see any points. Hmm and. We can say it's static mesh spawn. And we have cube already so. Maybe it does not take so what I can take because we have point. From spine sampler I will try once just see if we can. Simply distribute something so what I can do is if does not. Mesh sampler add mesh entities. Starting mesh I can search. Cube. Here yeah so I can remove it. The points are coming in here but not coming here for some reason. So this is what we have to. So I can try directly plugging it in. To see if something is. There because if you see I can uh because when we resample we get points. You plug it in we get something here see. So that is there already so in the points it's working on the resembling points. But we want we can transform this also. Uh we can simply. Where is the transform point so I can duplicate this one. Should. How to connect this automatically? Take this and. And here we can you know. Give minimum maximum. Was it ten or no maybe more hundred. Same. So we can offset them but this why they are like multiple on this point or what? Hmm the. Too much minus. See this is it will be randomized but this. See, this is, it will be randomized, but this is not, uh, what we want. We want points on top of it. Basically. So disable, can we disable it? Enable, yeah. So this is, what is the shortcut? E, E for enabling, nice. So it's here, the points. So. Nice. We learned something new. Now, the question is, uh. We have spline. Sampler. Should I take another spline sampler, taking this? Let's see. But take this one, and I'm I'm also like this is. Basically, creating two cubes at the same place, which is also not. Good. It could be. Select all these and. Disable them. So this is. Yeah, okay, okay. So it's like when it was uh. Doing this. Now, uh, we have spline mesh and I can apply this and remove this one. Here we can change the number of. At two hundred I can do. They're like way more, so when I will. You know, enable this one, it will create this. And now we know we have. Gale a lot. So now we have points basically in there. And I can say, okay, minus two hundred. To two hundred, basically. Yeah, so we can. Do it more. Just like minus four hundred. To four hundred. Right? So we got the points and they are scattered and we can rotate also. So mainly in Z, so I will do three sixty. Minus three sixty. So they are randomized and scale also. We can randomize simply. It's like a workaround. It's not the perfect way to make it, I believe. Uh, but it's a workaround. So we can at least do. So setting my spawner, I don't want cube, I want this, uh. This, or we can see if we have quigs and everything, okay? So I'll bring in here. And we have bunch of, uh. Let's see in in my view, if we have. Uh, cover, the rock, basically plants. We have grass that we can also test. Background is not what we want. Basic is also not that. So it's, it does not have. Good stuff. And we have mountain grasslands, we have meshes, uh. Bushes we don't want. So road is not. Let's see. It's one bush only, sadar trees, not one mountains, it's not what we want. Uh, plants is what we want. Soil we have. So it's it's not still. Rocks are still a big one, so if I see. How big this is? This is three meter, four meter, but you can scale it anyway, so it's not an issue. The one the point is. It don't have anything. Why? Why don't have? That's so weird. Medieval environment and we say. Ground. Ground cover. So that is we have. Nature and BP Sky props. Meshes. I think these are. Static meshes. Which still don't want. Where is? Why don't we have any? This ground plant is there. Let's say maps, landscape. Nothing. Interesting. Building is nothing interesting. Props, uh, also not. So with the ground plant is the only. Good thing what we have, but it it is only plant. Where is the debris and everything? That's, that's what I want, I want the debris. So. This is my water material, I can. Temple of Cambodia had have. Some decals. Puddles. Effects, environment. Yeah, here debris. Not type of debris I want. Like this is, for example, if. Let's say path rocky, right? So this is here. Yeah, so we can take this. And I will simply. We have it selected already as SM. And we go to our forest path and we can add it. Is it? Not point mesh, we wanted to add it here. Hmm, point mesh. To insert it, so remove it, okay? So now you see we have basically. A debris in here. And we can, you know, take these points and now we can filter it out. It's uh. Definitely going up and down that we can remove. It's it's definitely not gonna be perfect because it's not on top of the surface. It's uh from the spline and we are using this mesh. Which is not aligning in there. Hmm. Where is it? Here, so. I just want to remove this. So it don't look odd. Oh, and large we can. Do four. Two. I'll see how. It's too much. Three. One. So what we have is basically. Rocks everywhere. And we can do two things. We can either. You know, uh, do it with the the resampling of it, or we can filter the point. Okay, so we can say, okay, uh. Noise filter, uh, noise density. Does it work? Yeah. And we can check if it works. And we can also try. Filter. Point filter. What was the, hmm, he had it, no? Points, density filter, sorry. Density filter. We take the point and we output the point. Nope, what? So I will try placing this. After this. Sampler. Maybe I don't know how to use it, so I will not blame. The tool for it. It's there, so it's the default. Do we have to do it by something, some values? I don't know. If there is uh something is required on this, but. Again, we can simply reduce it by. Simply giving this. Now we have lesser and also like we have randomized it. T well. I know, though. See, this is, uh, it's not blending. Well with the things. And so the one thing we can definitely introduce is, uh. You know, pushing them down to go in there. And the second we can introduce is blending, basically. So randomly we can. Yeah, so we have almost all of them. As you know, see, it's more debris. And everything is there. It's like much more organic than the other one. We can do it on the landscape also. Now, uh, for the for the debris again. We had it yesterday also, so I'll open it up and see this is the material. Yeah, and I can open the parent. Here you see, uh, it's. Coming here and I can show you what we did yesterday. And it is like super easy to introduce our. RVT is a real-time virtual texture in here. So we have our. Materials and I'll show you. You know, bridge rock, no, not on a bridge rock. We have dirt road. On the table, you see here? We just. Had the. These nodes. So this is the material function and these are the textures. So I will just copy this. We haven't blended like normal and other things yet, which is fine. Paste it here. And. This is albedo. We put it into B and then we put it into basically, that's it. Yeah, and we save it. And as our material function have those values of to control. The thing. Maybe it will have, I didn't even check if it have already the RVT stuff. Maybe this is making our scene heavy? Okay, so if I go back now, come on, don't all save. Ah, okay. Hmm. Let's see if anyone have any question. Okay, you see this uh is. You know, it will be much more better to blend. Now if it's not visible and also the color is really popping, I can make it. You know, much better. And I to show you basically how. We go here and you see we have RVT. Values. And we can hardness, we can do, we can how much we want. See, it's when it's not and it is, it takes the ground texture and put it on top. It's ready to blend it. It's not high resolution, but we can change this resolution also in the RVT textures. And we are using one K, we can talk in four K and just. Go crazy and hardness is like how much, you know, hard. Hard we want it to be and then we can move it up and down. Okay, so skip one and ten. Add a four, okay? So this is. Basically blending them together. Well, so they look a part of it. Right? So this is basically we can do to everything and even. Uh, this mesh seems is overall is fine, but I think it's too much in the Z. Kill too much in the Z and I'm going to. Change that in our. PCG graph. Good. And similarly, we can blend the normal and everything else. For now, I'm just going ahead. So just one, do do it in the parent and it just work basically. Okay, it look ugly here. But when it will have in the real scene, it will be nice. Transform point and let me. You know, do unlock this. Can I scale it like that? Only X was working in here. This does not have any change, so. Yeah, that's totally fine. We we keep it. Yeah, this is how we can scatter basically on top of the spline now. The thing is, this is, uh. It's not, if it's not replicatable, but it should be, in in my opinion. It should be. A replicate table to other thing. I don't, still don't know just. Okay, so that's one and uh. Again, we can do the same thing. We can transform the point we take in. We can put the grass in the middle if we want to. Let me just take this and I take same as re-sample it. And I don't transform it too much. So I'll just reset all these. Okay. And rotation maybe we could keep. Yeah, so this is, yeah, so maybe. Keep and scale we keep. And our starting mesh, we can pick which one we want to have. In here. So maybe I'll take, uh. Something. We have. Grass. This is generic grass, so I will take this D. With a clump, right? So and we have mesh. And we will see we have. In the middle, we have grass. You know, growing in the middle. Yes, right now is a bit. Weird. So what I'm gonna do, I transform. Which one is X, uh? So four hundred minus four hundred. So it's basically become more. Like that. And in the sampler, I will reduce it. So we get more of this grass. Transform points and then in here also fifty. Or maybe minus fifty. Fifty, right? So to get a randomized, let's maybe reduce the number of. More, we can more grass. Okay, see, see, so. We got something like this. And also, uh. In the. On the transform, we have other angle also, you can see. Minus five or minus fifteen. Fifteen and this also minus fifteen. Fifteen, so they randomize a bit more. And this one we can see, okay, this should have. No, if you want more. Of it. The scale variation and everything. Yeah, see, this have, we have already. If you want this process more. No? Minus five. Cent five, right? The center of the mesh. And overall, the other mesh is, uh, our spline is two below, so I will just do. Bring it up. Twenty-five and we can make it. Five, I think. I think it's, it's supposed to be same on this, so I will just. Do. Both of them. Five plus just five and fifteen. So busy all the meshes above. And this point we can manually move as well. Whereas here we have now grass in the middle. Whereas here we have now grass in the middle. And we, we can totally polish the material of this and we can put leaves and twigs and everything else as well. Okay, you see, so now we have a path which is more detailed with P C G. I'm happy like I'm learning new stuff every day and this R V T solved a big, big issue for us. And and the water is looking ugly every day. And do we get this back? No. Right, so at least we have road better. And why this is not replicating on this side also, we have to see how it's not working because. Forest path have, uh. Basically it have the thing, so if I take the forest path, uh, P C G and I will make it smaller again. Okay, I made it smaller. Get to match it and I'll been here. Second one to cover our second one and I will. And how do we know basically? It should technically work because this spline have. So maybe this is a piece, that's why I want spline inside here, uh, to control it later on. As I wish to. But it is not letting me. Want to convert. Push component, uh, let's look inside if we find something. Forest path is there. And what this plan accepted, that one is like, it's like the first one it accepted. So let's see if we can do something about it. And the spline is a tag with forest path and select multiple. Yes. Perfect, so we have to just turn on the select multiple and now if I delete, delete this. One. Select this one. And make it bigger. It works perfect. And now we have a spine path. With. This thing. Okay, now, uh, what I want is to sample this to. To landscape, this curves to stick to landscape like on top of it. Uh, always on, you know, sample the thing. I know it is possible, so we'll just search, uh, P C G. Uh. Hmm, maybe we can create a. New tab, P C G, uh. What we call it snap. Spline to land skip. Here, there's something similar. No, this is not the one, other one is basically I'm seeing it's like on spline and now this is the. Thing. Now we are talking about the thing. Ah, it's okay, it's a projection. Cool you, just just two nodes. We already had it, so I'll take this one maybe, I'll say, okay, get. Landscape data. We have it here and then we say, okay, project. On top of it. And we, projection target. In this. And I plug this. And this stupid piece of. And what did it make this bullshit? I don't know. What this is. Okay, and go up. Did it work? Yep, it's snapping now. Like we want it to. So if I select the spline path. Perfect, isn't it? In a. Yeah, it changes every time I make changes to spline, but it's fine. See. But this is much more versatile. Now we can change anything as blending with the landscape and it will go. And it's not just that the mesh will definitely change, it's like the wrong side bulge. Basically, I want to make. I like M shape, M shape, M shape, triple M shape, basically, or W shape, basically. Up here, down, up here, down, up here, basically, to be, we make like this mesh. How will you try it again? And now this is, this is, this is why it is ending here is because, uh, we can make it. Longer. Okay, go, yeah, perfect. Alright, so this is, is it busy? And now let's try, I will take this, uh, I can duplicate this one easily and just say go in and it will work now. Now we're gonna do a fun stuff. We can basically. Now we know how this works. We can basically fill it in with the gravestones basically also inside here. We can place anything in this compound based on this spline. We can put gravestones, we can put trees and everything. How we want. But like just to play because of scale perspective, it might be super crazy. And collision definitely we don't have. Yeah, as I said, the, by the click scale side, it might be crazy, it might not be accurate. So the grass we can scale down, but we can increase the number of them. Debris also is, is super big, so we can reduce the number of it, uh, reduce the scale and put more number of it. And same goes for this, uh, spline mesh. Not liking it much. It's too big, too big also and also too tall. Did it back with the terrain also, what? Isn't this crazy? It's banking basically with the terrain. And now we have here. We need to fix that, uh. That mesh. We have these tiny pebbles here, but color is not matching, so it's, everything is a red. Come on. Stupid war, what is this? What this is? Is it the spline? What is this hidden? Hidden wire. Yeah, so we, we need to work, maybe we can hand place things. And reduce all this stuff. Perfect. Okay, too much playing. Uh, as per the scale, what I can do, I can put. Our scale in there, that's, uh, one of the most annoying part because it's hard to predict scale. When you have larger areas. So one thing I'm sure we need to fix is, uh, this. And if I show the. Link, I don't know if I have it, let me just look at it, uh, in my other tab. Just a second. And last time is working fine, which is good. Let me get with the chat if I see someone is there. You guys still here? If you stay, say hello, so I know you guys still watching, that's wonderful. Uh, if this give me a second. To. Get that post again. We looked at it yesterday. Hmm, commands. Thank you, thank you, Milan, you're awesome. Hmm, where is the tab? Here. Okay. See. Okay, and here if I again go back. Now, see this, this is a good friend Eldrick's, which I showed yesterday also. This is something other we can. You know, so there are roots, there are debris, uh, that is, even this mesh is big enough. But you see, it's, it's by the, even, even this, uh. Tracks and everything we can make manually, but you see there is a lot of asset work. Which make the scene feel good. I like the wind system also, I see this is. So our good friend also had multiple materials, one is like this mud, dirt, puddles or maybe debris, rocks. Grass, all these are there and then we. You know, put this grass patches in the middle on the side. So we don't like how if it's like, see like this, we make this like this, a big one. And so that looks good basically to certain extent. And something similar we want to do, like I see here we had a gap. Here is the gap, it's like something opposite we want to do, basically, something similar. Okay, so yeah, so this is, uh, good, I. I don't know if you made all the search or use some quick search on everything on the channel, so, but this was really good when I posted it. Okay, and I don't want to post my video to hijack his. Post per here, this is what we want to make and if we have, we have some time. So. I will. Make that mesh again, okay, oh, this. A mesh going up and down. So it's simply, if we compare it with video. The player is two meter, it's like two meter this side, two meter this side, so at least it's like five meter at least. And so I'll try doing something similar. Create again or we can open the file. Is our road. Tree. You know. And a turn off the subdivision. Displacement and all the subdivisions are. For now, and it is. Three meter and why it is two meters, I will make it. Ah, come on. That was easy. No words. So much for Wu Khan, hmm. Let's restart quickly at least. I'll select all, I would say scale. X or not Y twice. So it is almost five minutes if I again. And what? We found a bug or what? Hmm, restart. Look at the speed, how it restarted. Oh, bladder is awesome. We have to praise what other choice we have. Scale Y twice. Okay, and. And I'll move it here. Where else is here? So now we have something like this. So make. Oh, intentionally these three. Bumping up stuff. And if I look at. I'll add one more segments here. So this is something like this. I need to turn on filter. Modifier. Extras. Noise. So we have two of these. And we can. Now select all of them. So I forgot the shortcut of this. And we say individual scale Z zero, so they are flat basically. And. Also, we put to the bottom, move it to the center. Like. The outer one. the outer one. Move down scooge. We displacement and not on the edges. And we do maybe catmull clar can we say okay don't we said keep corners. Okay and we have much more smoother and we can you know repeat this stuff. But I for now remove it. Enough dense enough I think for our thing and one thing also I will do how much is it? Hmm scale. To make it square basically. Almost yeah so it's squarish in there. Hmm uh now we have this road one A I think if this not our exported. Uh road one B is it this one mesh export. And let's go back and where is our and road we will just replace it here we have one B and we say reimport. And yep so we have a big one. A lot. But it's too big. We're still too big maybe. Yep. At least on this and I can feel it's too big it's like knee high. So uh and we can add collision also so we don't need to worry that much as well so it's this ten centimeter only. How come? It's twenty cent fifty centimeter I would say like this is still not that much. And also not not all the part will be up there but how is the blending now blending is smooth that is cool. Okay and what we can do is uh open it. Here or uh I can show you how you can make simply uh really quickly this. Or bring it in here. Yeah so this is the actual size so basically we are scaling it too much it's not supposed to be that big okay. So we go to the PCG. Our PCG and we select the transform points and we reset it. Okay and now when we play. Right so is there no? And it's still not. If I'm here it's almost almost slightly increase it. Okay that's add and transformer zero and zero to see to see how it reacts basically. So now we have the ground texture is in the below also. And some on the sides. Now we can do one thing is uh this super straight we can make it uh go X and Y. And like we can duplicate this one. And we can say only X or Y. And we can make a strength. And we can move it. And we have different noise. Not it's only one so I will just always based on this. So I will add the new texture in there. So the texture one will say clouds. And we can increase and decrease the size of it. But it will not touch the edges because we have marked it. But so we go to the top one and and I can increase and decrease how much. Want it to be. Okay so imagine we say okay this is good. And and we have something. And now this I can scale Z point five let me gain more than maybe seven point seven. Right and now let's export it. Same. Reimport. And we must see it in here. It is it have the undulation. Now uh if you go to modeling tools. I think and uh uh mesh to collision. It turn on it will show up and like that and it's like I want uh convex hulls it will show up this. You can increase the mesh count. I think you can number of convex hulls you can change to. It's like it will float otherwise so what we want to do is going to see where it is. Line box is not. So there is. Why it is? There were this option to change how many we want. Simple find edge line this not this it's fine. Yeah here. So so if I say three is it not? Is because it will if you look from side the our character will float which we don't want and it's like a big one. Simple and that's also fine remember there used to be simple. This is like simple. That's except for now. Now we don't need it and when we play now. A player should be able to stand on top of it. Right so that little bit will be issue but not that much. But the grass and everything is there like we have everything is too big so we'll make it smaller definitely. And if I stand here. Still not feel you know the exact scale as much as I want. And also we need to change the number of it changes a little actually not that much. Let's just keep it because the Z depth is also not that much so we don't want to destroy it that much. See this is is missing because there's not enough depth now. And I can scale Z. Reimport. Yeah so we can we can make it much better slowly now let's reduce the thing and reduce the scale of other stuff like debris we have three and I will say okay two one point five this also is okay one point five two point seven five okay so we have much more smaller compared to and we can increase the density also for sure. Plants sample I would increase. And filter I will try if it works. Here okay. And transform these points we did. Alright so we have grass in the middle. Debris. Grass on the side this is uh the blending thing we can fix that surely. Painting the landscape. But definitely we can. Keep improving it as much as we want. Okay so let's export it once again. The sides are not that promising but I can do I can duplicate this one. And accept Y I will do Z so we get this. Keep it point two four but it's a little not that much. Uh and also we can duplicate and you know. No let's come here. Reimport. Here. Oh it was still in the game okay. So now we have more varied mesh a simpler corner. And if this bugs us we can manually do it as well. Where did it go? What happened? Okay we can PCG here's here. What happened about? So I can take this. Something happened no it's here. And modeling attributes. You know we have getting this is what I wanted so it go down up down up. It should be the other way around. It's giving more mesh below than up. Well let's just keep it. What this is not. She's plain mesh is um descriptor is here and why it is not showing up is again something we have to find out if I hover over it ah see oh come on unreal. So it's happening with that so it's it's also lost approximate size of it I don't know why. Like here also you see it have zero 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 this have size this have also approximate size but this one again this one lost and it's vanished now. And why Unreal is doing it I don't understand. That's why we have replaced a new one not use the same one in the first is super weird why it is happening. Hmm do we have anything? Love you with it yeah. Because here it's showing the approximate size but not and computer oh. Say it and yeah this this somehow is broken mesh now. So if what if I drag and drop but it's okay I will I will not press too much. So this is basically working I'm happy uh we made progress and we made things change I do we just definitely need to change the scale of things. Especially all things around and we can start using resources and everything because scale is a big issue. Uh here uh if we compare it to the scene we see which is super inspiring and what we have is uh really non skeletal. So yeah so this is the and I'll do one and it's like small step at a time but we are moving forward uh something and I'll see if we can uh I will transfer this uh rock blending to it material. And we'll do one more pass of block out on our bridge and church we have and we have layout. Already where is our pure rough here oh. So it's fine so we need to you know blend this well. So it's fine. So we need to, you know, blend this well, which we have to make. Every blender. So with this we need to make more proper. And the scale is a thing and the asset is the second thing. But. We need to sort it out and the water also not looking perfect, but even if we don't have perfect water. At least the composition and distribution should look good basically like not like this. This is not okay. Even if I do manually will be much better than having it procedurally. Uh we spent a lot of time already. Okay, so yeah, so this is good. We have blending material and we have. Spline mesh which is breaking the spline for somehow, but we can easily expand it. And for this also we can use the same spline to put gray stones. We create close splines, put gravestones in there and we can uh. Uh keep the patches of this. Now we can make those path, uh basically stone path with the blocks leading to church, leading here around. And going to the tombstones, stuff like that. And this wall was underneath the ground. And again, we can do the same thing in here also. Oh, simply transform this projection and then you know transform the points. So it is up. Uh we can use the bounds also. Uh I believe we have the mesh. And this mesh was not tileable. So that's why it's like that. Okay, maybe we will transform the points and it will be just fine. Okay. Okay, so. It was fun, uh learn something new. And I will post a link for the feedback session after this. A stream of course and you post your feedback quest. Post your work in progress and I will, you know, share my thoughts and we'll go through all the submissions tomorrow. Same time, two to four Central European time and five thirty to. Five thirty to seven thirty Indian time. So yeah, I will see you guys there. So if you have any question in the meantime, let's talk. You're always welcome to ask. And as always, thank you very much for joining in Milan. You're awesome. Asher, thank you very much for joining in. Uh I wish there would be more people will uh bring your uh friends and ask questions. It's more it's more fun with more people. So yeah, thank you very much for joining me today and I will see you in the next one, guys. Bye. Take care.